Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the Subcommittee on Technology to order. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Ms. Larrabee.
Ms. Larrabee did call that she's ill, just want to let the public know that she could not make it today, but she will be getting all of the documents and we'll make sure that she's up to speed. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Please rise for a salute to the flag. Flight allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't see any citizen input time, so we'll just jump right into the discussion. 3.01, discussion and vote to refer the digital device policy. Madam Superintendent or designee?
Yeah, so Mr. Cabral is the one who put together the policy. What you have here, I do think that we probably, I mean, I'm looking for some feedback on there, what, if anything, needs to be revised or added, so I'll hand it over to Scott.
Good evening, everyone. So this is the policy that we had in place during COVID. We cleaned up some of the verbiage and added a couple of forms at the end that I would like to see on the technology side that all students and parents sign next year. We're at year three into Chromebooks being in every building and every student having a Chromebook. The one thing is, there's not much accountability right now, so if something is broken, we triage and we move on and we give another Chromebook out. So I would just like to see that all the buildings from the district down are on the same page moving forward. I did not include in the policy because I wanted you to look at it, to refer to the committee. We've never charged for repairs and/or replacement parts. Many of the districts are now. I passed out to them just an idea on what some of the main repairs are that we look at with Chromebooks. And again, I, you know, look to your guidance and discuss what your thoughts are on that. The policy is very straightforward, most districts use it. Talks about, you know, digital citizenship, acceptable use, parent responsibilities, school responsibilities, student responsibilities. If you note in red, on the third page, it says unreturned Chromebooks will be retreated, will be treated as unreturned books and related instructional materials to school, which means that the student is basically put on kind of a probation. So they could be precluded from school functions, activities, events, including graduation. We've had discussion with members in this room. You know, if a student doesn't bring a textbook back, they may not graduate. Their grades or transcripts or diplomas are held back until they, you know, give that textbook back. So because the Chromebook has become everyone's textbook and a main piece of learning, we feel that we should be holding the students responsible, just like it would be a textbook. One big piece in this document that it talks about is the filtering that has to be done. Federal regulations. I can't say that Frank, Brian and I, when we started with COVID, we were probably one of the only districts that initially got right out there. We use Relay by Lightspeed, it is a phenomenal product. We actually are now working with the vendor. They're using us as a test bed for some of their newer products. So we are completely SIPA compliant as far as filtering out those devices when the students are onsite and when they're offsite. So a student can take their Chromebook home and they're not going to get to a site that they should not be getting to, just like they're at school. So we have been doing that since the onset of COVID, something that many districts were having a hard time to A, pull off, B, fund, and C, keep working. So it's a testament to the gentleman sitting at this table and our tech team. That was a giant lift and we're able to do it and we're able to do it effectively. The system will automatically send an alert to Frank and his team if a student is doing something that's inappropriate. Policy there is Frank reaches out to the building principal. He vets it first, of course, because even though it's a filter, there are things that get through that filter that, you know, that might be a keyword. The kid was not doing anything wrong in class, it just flags a keyword. Frank vets it and then he gets the school administration involved. So with that, you know, I'll open it up for questions on the policy. I do, I would like input from you gentlemen and the committee on, you know, the fees, the structure that I have separately, and if that's something that we would like to include in the policy moving forward.
Mr. Bailey?
For me, well, first off, I'll start with the fee structure. How would we be implementing the fee structure? Let's say if a Chromebook was broken and let's say a student broke a screen on a Chromebook. How are we enforcing that to make sure, are we, you know, are we doing it the same way as in terms of infractions if a student doesn't return a Chromebook, like you said with the books or?
So right now we have, and we'll consider it two pools of Chromebooks. We have the Verizon piece, which are all the middle schools. So if someone comes in with one of those, it gets shipped out right away, they fix it. We're still on that warranty structure. There are pieces that a student might be responsible for, the stylus perhaps. The buildings have bought aftermarket ones, they charge fifty cents a dollar, and they put that into the school kitty. I'm a father of three. When my son Ed Diamond had his first Chromebook, he broke it the first week, I had to buy a new one. But also being a father of three, we realize that there's malicious damage and that there's everyday wear and tear. I'm of the school of thought that if there's everyday wear and tear, we're responsible for that. It's our Chromebook fleet. I'm looking more at this fee structure as student A at one school is on his fifth Chromebook because he likes to throw them down the stairs or he just treats them with disrespect. And that's something that we have to work with the buildings to identify. Our technicians have been really good at that and the buildings have been really good at that as well. They'll say, this kid broke his fifth Chromebook, he smashed the screen. So what typically happens right now, because we don't have a fee structure in place, is they get one of our loaner fleet, an older Chromebook, they don't get a new Chromebook. So we go through, I want to say 125 to 130 Chromebooks a day. We've gotten into a really good system where they'll pick them up from the buildings, they'll give them spares, and that way no one is without a Chromebook. However, the repeat offenders are getting a used one and not necessarily a new one that we're injecting into the Chromebook fleet.
Yeah, that was going to be one of my next questions. And then also on that acceptable usage portion, teachers have the prerogative of setting additional requirements for Chromebooks and other digital devices used in the classroom. That was, I mean, I just wanted to know more about that, just because as they're like a set standard, you know, as far as like repeated offenders, well, let's say kids are doing certain things in the classroom with the Chromebooks and like who's, my biggest thing is just like if they're, let's say if a kid does one thing with one Chromebook and the other kid does the same thing, are they, are they getting the same recommends or something like that? I don't ever want it to be in a position where a kid's like, you know, it's the he said, she said thing, so.
So right now there are some buildings that do it well?
Yeah.
And there are other buildings that need some help. So when we spoke as a senior staff, we're looking for a policy and a procedure that we can start to implement so that everyone is on the same page. As far as filtering, everyone is treated the same. But I can tell you that certain buildings do different things with their Chromebooks now, but that's why we're looking at this language, to try to clean everything up. Some teachers, when they get into a classroom, they say, hey, let's close the Chromebooks and we're going to talk today. That's their prerogative to close them. Other teachers are using them as more of a, you know, a full period tool. That was just put in there so that way they can, you know, use it effectively in their classroom as they feel.
That's about usage, that's not about
Correct.
consequences in regards to damage, et cetera. I mean, we need a consistent policy across the board so that everybody does exactly what you just said, so we have consistency from school to school.
Yeah, I was, yeah, I was just asking, I think that's more, that would be more like subjective in terms of how you handle the situation, but that's it pretty much for me.
And I just wanted to add one quick piece. When you see the Chromebook handbooks, the sign, the sign-off pages, we are implementing Parent Square this summer, so those would actually be electronic. We would actually be able to push out this policy to the parents electronically. They'd be able to answer the form and we'd get it back. Mr. Mike Loizik could then collect the data, update our SIS system. So we're moving in the right direction where these policies can actually be shared with the families electronically moving forward next school year.
So one of the questions, and this is going to be a theme probably of this new committee, of asking for data to be sent to the full committee on a regular basis so we can tweak things out, but then get some data. My concern is what does the data look like over the last, I'm looking at this policy, it's pretty good. You know, the one from the 2020, April night, 2020. But it begs the question, what have we been doing since this time? For how many have been broken? How many have actually paid for any of the damages? It says throughout here in various places, it's like a book, you have to replace it. There's another one that says something along the lines of the code of what you would do. Students will be responsible for the entire cost of repairs to Chromebooks that are damaged intentionally or neglectfully or, you know, I think you have a lot of language in here. My concern is that from, just from what I hear across the district, we haven't been following this in any way, shape or form. And that's a problem for consistency. We have a policy, it needs to be followed with fidelity across all schools. To hear at any meeting, well, we some do it better than others, and I'm not criticizing you, that's just a fact. We shouldn't have some do it better than others. As Mr. Bailey just said, if we have a policy that you break your screen, we have given you a case, we do this and that, you break your screen, you broke the screen. It didn't just automatically happen, so you broke the screen. It's, we're not teaching our kids and our families anything if we don't say, you broke it, you pay for it, the way I see it. So there should be lists of who owes obligations to the school. When you look at the high school level, kids want to go to the prom, they want to graduate and all that. That's where it comes to root. So I'm in eighth grade and I break my Chromebook and I owe $250 or whatever it is. That should stick with me through my entire career so that at some point, it's going to catch up to you to say, nope, because that's real life, it's going to catch up to you. I'd love to see some data on it, I'm just, I'm not expecting very much other than not much.
We probably
I can show you, I can show you stats on broken Chromebooks, time of repair. I will say, you know, when I became the CIO, we've been working very closely, Maria and I, and there are things that we want to do. This, this policy was there and it wasn't being followed because up until that point, we really weren't a full department. We were working in different silos trying to keep the district running. Now that we're able to put some of these positions in place to have a true department, it will be easier for us to push these policies down to the buildings and also have the manpower to make sure that the policies are, you know, followed and done correctly.
Yeah, I, I think what I would say to that is, and I can appreciate the fact that we didn't have all these other positions in place, but we have a principal of the school. That's their house, that's their building, that they're the CEO. They should be responsible for this stuff and the policies. Just like if my school is giving out Chromebooks like candy, Mr. Bailey's school is actually holding kids accountable and teaching them that you can't just throw it in your bag down the stairs. That's not okay. So we, whether we have a million staff in your department, the end of the day, this is what you have. This all costs money, books the same, so I don't want to go on and on, but I totally support. I don't think there has to be many tweaks to this, maybe
Well, we would have to add the
Cleanest, I would maybe like make it more streamlined
Okay.
per se, because I think there's a lot of pieces, but the most important ones maybe put at the beginning. Like if you break it, you pay, something along those lines. Like that's a basic and here's the structure of what it will be. Obviously, we'd have to have some consideration for, you know, lower income kids and whatever it is, but at the end of the day, they need to understand that there is a consequence to breaking the thing. Now, if it's a wear and tear, you know, I get it. You're going to have your own procedures for like when they're at their useful life and what they're going to do, you know, so
Correct.
I think we, we're definitely going to, it's not like somebody's going to have a Chromebook for eight years and then they say it didn't work and you're trying to charge them. It, it should work very well for at least, what, three years?
Yes.
You know, so we, we shouldn't have a lot of complaints, but as far as I'm concerned, when this goes to the full committee, the committee needs to support the superintendent and you and your departments and the principals to say, this is what we think. Because if a parent just complains to us that says, well, they're charging me, well, it was very clear, this is what it was and this is very clear.
And they will sign, and the student will sign.
Yeah, like that is one of my questions, I'm glad you said that. So in here it says they will sign. Do we have, do we can get data on each school, how many sign?
So as of right now, the Verizon buildings have signed, the other buildings have not signed.
Because we didn't, right, so the technically, the Verizon piece, they all had to do digital citizenship and then they all had to sign off. We weren't a one-to-one until recently, right? Until this year, we made sure that everybody had one, et cetera. But our kids aren't taking it back and forth as the Verizon kids are because it has a data package with it. So this year we didn't, but the intention is that everybody, as we implement the policy, everybody will be required at the beginning of the year, just like they do acceptable use in any other form, they will sign off that they're going to receive a Chromebook and that they're required to take care of that Chromebook and they will be held accountable for the Chromebook.
Yeah, that doesn't say it on here, that's why, it should say at the top Verizon program. Chromebook hand, like when I'm reading this, it doesn't
This is for ours, the Verizon has their own
They have their own, so Verizon has their own and they share that information with us? So it lives in its own silo, the Verizon Chromebooks? This is just our forever Chromebooks under us.
All right, so then I don't understand why it had, why it wouldn't have been signed if this is our form?
Because they, the Verizon buildings had to fill out the Verizon piece and that actually supersedes ours because they're, they have a bunch of
No, get on the Verizon side. So if we had a student that, that isn't in the Verizon program, they're whatever, it's middle school, right, Verizon?
Verizon, yes, correct.
So like the high school, for instance, they wouldn't sign this?
The high school signed a form that we had that's separate from the policy. That was a, we use a staff and/or student equipment sign-off form. We have those for the high school. When we rolled out the new high school, they all filled those out. The elementary students did not because up until the start of the school year, we had ingested Chromebooks to make them all one-to-one, so they did not fill these out. Like Maria said, they're not even taking them home, they're using them in the classroom.
Yeah, so how many high school kids have signed would be the question.
All of them, yeah, I can get that
Yeah, I'm just kidding, because if they signed, so that would go hand in hand with, if they signed, and then you tell me that there's been thousands of Chromebooks broken at Durfey, we have a problem. So the data is just going to come together and
Put that all together for you.
But I do appreciate, I think it's, you're right on and we're fortunate to have the resources, but we can't just keep on giving stuff away, so. Any other question? Anybody else on that?
I was just going to say, we should prob, if we're going to do this, like month, we should probably keep it running spreadsheet and have the techs enter that in like, so we can look at it real time, data and the principals probably need, like at the institute that we do before school, it'd probably be nice to do like a 15-minute, because this is stuff that, I mean, they deal with it, but it's not making excuses for them, it's not really in their wheelhouse. Once the school year gets moving, tech is not like the thing, but if we do a, hey, a screen's going to cost 150, this is the, like, put it right on the, you know, on their radar day one. 15-minute trading and it's, that's how we do business day one.
So that it's included in all the information that they sign off, et cetera.
I can add it to our piece when we talk at the Admin Institute.
Right, yeah.
All right, good suggestion, thank you. We'll move on to 3.02, job descriptions.
I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt, but we were looking to get that referred.
Yes, motion to refer made and seconded? Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Seconded, oh, yes, yes.
Thank you, sorry about that.
That's okay.
So job descriptions, budgeted new positions.
Okay, so as we spoke, when we talked about the department reorg back a month ago and then also at the budget hearings, we're asking for a variety of new positions. I've included the job descriptions in the job descriptions. There are two already approved job descriptions. They were more there just for an FYI for you guys. It was the Student Information Systems Data Manager, which was approved a month and a half ago at that meeting, and then the Network Manager position, which was already an approved position back in 2008. That's just, we're bringing that back when we did that reorg. So those were the, just as an FYI for you guys. We have four new positions, which you have the job descriptions for, which would be the Systems Manager position that would live in the technology integration side. And then we have three positions that would live in the Break-Fix Technology Services, which would be Client Services Coordinator, Help Desk Coordinator, and VoIP Manager. I leave it to you guys that however you'd like me, do you like me to discuss the positions or would you just like me to, you know, just ask questions about the positions? They're needed positions on the technology services side. We are going to do away with the Director position in that department and we are going to break down the job duties between the Client Services Coordinator and the Help Desk Coordinator. The department has gotten so big that it just behooves us to have two members to basically be able to oversee the day-to-day operations and work in hand with each other. And then also myself, I'm going to take more of an active role on the technology services side. You gentlemen both know my background and I just feel that with the influx of devices, with the influx of changing over our buildings to all VoIP in the next coming months, with all the infrastructure projects, I just feel that it's in all of our best interest that I have a more of a day-to-day role in that department again, as well as overseeing everything else with these two new positions. And then the final position would be the VoIP Manager position. We have eight buildings left that need to have VoIP turned over, which will be in the future a cost savings. I can't really forecast what the cost saving is going to be yet because we still have to implement the systems and then we'll be able to see what lines we'll be able to cancel for a cost savings. However, when we talk about a 17-building plan, we really need to have someone to oversee day-to-day on that VoIP site. Currently, right now, it's being done by myself, one of our senior technicians and one of our junior technicians. We're trying to train from within. But I can answer any questions you have on those positions now if you'd like.
Mr. Bailey, any questions on that? So I, I think that we, it's very complicated and I do appreciate this Subcommittee being formed because we should get a good handle on, to the Subcommittee process, exactly what we have, what we don't have. A lot of this language is different to people, the descriptions of VoIP, all that stuff is different to a lot of people. So I'm a little confused myself just generally, but what my concern is to make sure that what we're doing is getting as part of like the five-year plan, and I know that you're all doing this, but I think, how do we get to, via the Subcommittee, so that everyone, the Sub, the full committee, the public, the city council, anybody else that wants to pay attention to what's happening, that we're all, that we know we've done the due diligence on everything so that we, we can give this department what the resources it deserves? Now, I think it's, we're fully underfunded personally. It's, so that we made this committee, I don't really want to go over every single one. I would like to have another meeting in 30 days, which is one of my last items, so that we can like get this to the next level. But my question on the budget is, and I've said this in the other meetings, July 1 is July 1, but I don't know why, if there's certain positions, we're not advertising them, filling them if we can now, because some of these positions are hard to find somebody. So waiting to me isn't the best thing.
I, I actually spoke to Mr. Almeida about that. So once the committee, if, let's say this is referred, these job descriptions, the positions were approved by the school committee, right, the full body. Once, if these are referred to the committee and then on the 11th, if they are approved, then we're going to be posting as soon as they're approved so that he can get a jump on trying to get the, the right candidate to the table.
And we're meeting on what, what day are we?
April 11.
11.
April 11.
So at some point, we had a org chart, I think that was there that explained
It's in one of the next, it's actually in the next item.
Oh, about the Fred, under the Fred TV one?
Yep.
So I think that is where, I'd like to get a good handle on what we have and don't have so that when we, when we follow this, it's like we've already done our due diligence at the Subcommittee on it. So maybe you could take us through that, this piece here and how these interact and
Do you want to do that in the next item or do you want?
No, I think, I'd rather do it now because, quite honestly, I'm not ready to, I don't feel like I have enough knowledge to say that we've vetted this, you know, this through well enough.
Do you want me to give you the 20,000-foot overview of the positions more of a, like not a technical speak?
Not, yeah, not technical, just sort of, I see your name half cut off at the top, but
So this is, this is a draft org chart based off of what we currently have in some of the anticipated positions. So CIO at the top and then there are three silos right now, they all work together. They work as one unit, but there are three different pieces. So Mr. Farias is the Director of Instructional, Integration, Technology Integration. He has a number of positions underneath. The new positions that we're looking for in this budget are the Systems Manager position and then a middle and a high school technology facilitator. Those positions are going to work hand in hand with the current positions. The new position, the new to the department position is the Systems Manager position. I can let Mr. Farias talk about that piece in his department because he's the best person to discuss his vision for that position.
So this would be more like we have Nicole Christie and Beth who kind of integrate, working in the schools, working in the classrooms with teachers, helping with testing, access, MCAS. This person would, but they're also getting sidetracked by, hey, this kid can't log in or this kid doesn't have an account or troubleshoot this little weird idio secresy that this kid has that can't log in to get them to do their work. This systems admin person would be kind of like behind the scenes and making sure all of those systems run. So for instance, and we'll get into this at Power, we won't go over the next agenda item, like our SSL single sign-on with Power School, we're at the beginning stages, which is just letting you log into multiple things with one, with one login. It's quirky, it's not really working. I have a person set aside to just kind of try to break it, like, is it, get it not to work so we can work with the company to get it to work. I envision this position to be separate from pushing into schools, like just working with them. We have 200 and something apps, I, last time I checked, I think 150 extension, browser extensions that cause issues and we, like, they, they need, it's like a car, they need servicing. So they would, they would be solely focused on, on that type of work.
And if I can interrupt, that will also allow Frank to work on the bigger picture stuff with myself, with Brian, the technology plan, the strategic plan moving forward, the budgeting piece. Right now, he really can't do that stuff because he's in the trenches with his team working on that piece. So that position, when we crafted that position, we envisioned it so that it can take some of the minutia day-to-day troubleshooting and advanced troubleshooting off of Frank's plate so that he can be dealing with the bigger picture stuff, running the department and planning for the future.
Yeah, it's, it, it ends up sucking a lot of my time away. And sometimes it's just set up a call, get three people on the call, the call, you don't really get anywhere, you got to do another call next week and it's kind of, it's like calling the cable company when you have a problem, you're on hold for a little bit, getting everyone in the room to work. It, it takes a lot of time and it's not fair to have me or, or the instructional techs that are in the school, that's taken away from the school, the time they service the school. So we envision that like as the sole description that, that they would work on.
Any question on that? The only suggestion I'd make on the, on the org chart would be, the Systems Manager that you just described doesn't appear like a facilitator, instructional facilitator in the same, so I would take it and put the facilitators under one. So under Mr. Farias would be the facilitator, instructional facilitator, so we could see like elementary, middle, high. But, and the second tier is other types of work that's still under him. Where this would fit under, right now it's sort of one line.
Okay.
Because I think it pulls it out like a tree, it'll help it to, us to understand and anybody that wants to, as we start creating positions, naturally people are going to say like, oh, what's this? You're making up, you know, jobs for this, that, you know, but when we lay it out in a very clear way, we can justify, let's just suppose that that position, what you just described, is a, is a very busy job, in my opinion.
Yeah.
For that one individual.
Yeah.
So by breaking it out and we look at the facilitators, at some point we might be like, how much is that now Systems Manager doing every day? They might be overwhelmed and we might need another box under that person. But if we just lump them all in, it doesn't make it seem very clear to us.
Okay.
So when you say, oh, we tried this for one year, year two, Mr. Bailey's going crazy every day, he's working 90 hours a week, he got this and that, we would love to have a second Systems person. It'll help to, to do that. My other question is on the, I'd like to see the breakout of the elementaries, the middles so that we can see where the facilitators are.
I can do that.
The Vils' coaches are confusing because of the nature of, it's like the grant and then it's off the grant and they're going to be half of us, so I like the idea that that's all under Mr. Farias, but at some point, that Vils' is going away.
And we're going to, and we're going to maintain those positions in our budget. Mr. Almeida has already budgeted for that.
They still would be under Mr. Farias.
Yeah.
Correct, so when I look at this, I would say, when I, the same thing with an org chart, how it disappears, that we need, let's say there's three, six, there's nine or 10. spots for facilitators, just because Vils goes away, we still need those ten spots, which I think you're all agreeing to. But that, that doesn't necessarily mean they're Vils coaches only, they're, they're middle school facilitators.
Okay.
Dash Vils, so it won't look like as if we're adding now six more positions because they fell off, uh, for grant.
Right.
And I appreciate the input, like I said, this was a draft, so that we could discuss it and we, we can make those changes very easily.
We're in the, I think one of the other items is about curriculum, uh, um.
Platforms.
Platforms, different things we have, so that would also fall under Mr. Farias, under instructional.
Mm-hmm.
So we, when we look at this too, we, we need to see where that, um, duty is going to be.
What they oversee, so you're talking about the instructional, because there are many platforms that are being used, right? So the, um, Christie and Nicole support those and, and, and Amanda, then the, um, new young lady that works.
And Lisa.
And Lisa, they all support that instructional technology, that's part of their work, you know, within the schools, and those coaches.
But I, I, I understand what you're saying, I mean, in the org chart, what I can do is I can create the org chart, then I can also just put some of the, the roles and responsibilities under each position, just so that it's a more comprehensive.
In that box, in their box.
Yeah, because we have, I mean, we got thousands of kids, we got thousands of devices, so it's gonna seem like I'm asking for more positions. But in essence, that's a, organizing that stuff is a job too.
Correct.
And I don't know, like, it might be as part of some of these sprinkled in, but what I see, just from looking at this, it's, like you said, a little of this one, a little of that, a little of this one. I'd like it to be, no, it's your job, that, so you're gonna be the one looking at how much is used, what is used, why are we picking this, what is this? So I think we need a point person on instructional, um, curriculum as part of some kind of structure. Because Mr. Farias is only the director, he can't do all that all day. So when we look at it, who's gonna, and we'll talk more about this when the digital part comes up, but just as feedback, I think somehow instructional curriculum needs to be, uh, part of it.
Um, so if there's no more questions on the instructional tech side, we're gonna move into, I'm gonna move to the right-hand side of it and we're gonna talk about the Sims piece. Um, so currently, Brian has two individuals, he has a data specialist and a data technician. Under this new reorg, we've discussed moving that data technician over into be more of a, a clerk role so that she can help everyone in the department, she's doing that now, she prints IDs, she answers phones, she routes tickets, the whole nine yards. So using her strengths, her strength now and knowing the lay of the land, we're gonna move her into the technology services piece so that she can assist all sides of technology. When we do that, we have the data specialist and we have the database manager, which at the time was an anticipated position, it's approved now. Um, that's the one that we're still looking for an individual, um, as we speak, and there'll be an addition of a data specialist position. Um, that'll give Brian the team that he needs to, in this coming year, maintain X two with state reporting for the current school year and then move us forward into, um, Power School. The individual that we're in discussion with for the database manager position has a plethora of experience with Power School, um, has integrated in four different districts. Um, so we're hopeful that that all works out for us because it'll be a, a very highly valued member of that team to help Brian. I, I can let Brian further discuss the Sims piece. Um, the data specialist job that we're asking for is already an approved position. Um, he can speak to those duties and he can also speak to the database manager position that was approved at last full school committee.
Can I ask you a question on the first, you would mention in the first position, where is that on here?
So it's, if, if you look to the left, it says department clerk, that's just, just for me when I was planning, she's gonna do more of the day-to-day, um.
That's what you call the technology services.
She was.
You use a different terminology than department clerk.
It was data specialist, um, and typically, and Brian can tell you, over the years, when we couldn't get a position approved, they became either a data technician or a data specialist and they did whatever work was needed by the director of the department at the time. Um, this member, I put clerk there, um, but she knows all aspects of it and have had the discussions with her. She would still be doing work with Brian, she'd still be answering the phones for technology services, she'd still be providing the security IDs that we print for Ken's department and security. She does a little bit of everything and she's.
The yellow, you have a yellow at the top and a red in here, so the red's going away, is that what I'm seeing?
No, the red stays, the, when we get to technology services, I can further discuss, she, that position's just gonna move into the technology services wing because she's gonna work with all three departments.
So just for me, she'll be working for all of us.
No, I know, but there's two, there's a, a yellow at the top, so it's anticipated client services coordinator?
I'm not at that piece, I'm at the Sims piece right now, um, which is the blue box under Brian. I just, I just referenced the individual under that yellow box, I don't wanna say her name in public record, but that's, we're gonna move her from Brian's area just to be, you know, full transparency, she's gonna move from Brian's area to work with all three departments.
And then there's gonna be a, a clerk underneath that client services coordinator position?
That is the clerk.
That is the clerk, she will be the clerk.
She's the clerk.
She, this, and again, this was just a draft, she should probably be moved to a different piece of the org chart, this was just a very basic draft at that time.
But it, that's a position is currently under Mr. Michael Azak.
Correct.
And that wants to stay and filled whether it's with the same person or a different person, under Mr. Michael Azak, is what I'm asking.
She's gonna, it's, she's gonna be shared, we've had the discussion, she's gonna be shared between all three facets because of what she does now for Brian in Brian's side, she's gonna continue to do it, but we're just, I was trying to move her into the org chart to show that she was used on all three facets of the department.
So I'm getting like half time, but he's getting like half time.
Yeah, so I would just, it sounds like you wanna take that position and move it under you, with a, somehow under all three, so, so there's a link to all three.
Correct.
Which is confusing here because it makes it look like as if it's a totally separate silo.
Under the. Okay.
But what I'm asking is, Mr. Michael Azak is now gonna have under Sims, a data specialist, a second data specialist and a data man, database manager only? Or is there, that clerk still going, is there gonna be another clerk there?
At the present time, there isn't, she's gonna do both sides. And if we feel, when we discussed the positions, we wanted to see where Power Schools took us first. Um, and then if we have to come to the committee, like you guys have all said, if we need anything to come to you guys, we'll come to you at that time. But we wanna really see where Power School's gonna take us. And with this database manager position, Brian and I feel very confident that the individual that we're trying to vet and get in is gonna be, it's gonna be excellent for us.
I agree.
Sorry, I interrupted before you was kicking it to you, but, like, do you have anything to add that?
No, I, I mean, just, like I said, in the last twelve years, state reporting has gone exponentially from, you know, Sims only to now staff, now students, um, three times a year, staff twice a year, every grade, every schedule, um, every conduct record, it's all going now, several times a year. Not even counting that this, the federal level has made civil rights reporting an every-year thing now going forward, that we're constantly doing stuff and falling behind, that's one of the reasons why we haven't necessarily trained well in areas, because we're doing state reporting almost constantly now. That, we need to, we have people like specialized on that, work with the schools more so, the areas that we see as a regular set of areas. We can correct at the school level, whether it could be an individual user, it could be like a department, we can work with them better. So you get the errors down, uh, quicker and then, you know, certify on time, which is always the goal. So we're just always growing in that direction. And then the power school side of things, which we'll get to next, I'll wait on that part, but I think the staff that we, we hopefully will hire and the ones we have, uh, still working for us, they're already excellent at state reporting, because they've done it either for us or other districts. And they have training backgrounds, which will help us, uh, one of the mandates of the, you know, switching power schools, that Brian should know everything about the one system and no one else knows anything. That's what I'm trying to do now with, um, the power school implementation is that, making sure as we work through things, that the staff are taking ownership of their departments, like Cindy Coles has done that with registration. Kristen Farris, Michael Osh, doing that with special needs, um, working with Cameron Wong, they're all taking a bigger, deeper, I might let them, taking a step back and letting them, you know, do it themselves a little bit, let them fail a little bit, and they come in and help, we'll be sort of spinning plates, is what I'm calling it right now, that, um, that the staff that we will add will make us a pretty good department in terms of, uh, what we do as a regular thing.
Can you give the, uh, a real basic explanation of what, like, so when you say Sims is student information management system? And then what do you call it when you have to send the information to the state?
The state now collects all districts, uh, electronically through, it's called SIF, which is School Interoperability Framework, where they, every night, Aspen or Power School, whatever system is being used, sends it, um, not just nightly, sometimes it's nightly, but many things are several times a day, they'll send all the student information that is required, you know, their attendance. It goes through electronically and the state gets their system to suck it in and then process the errors and that's how they share the data with other parts of the, uh, Department of Education once we certify. So, um, that's been like that for five, six years, so it's almost like the errors are coming in twelve months a year now. It used to be just like, they would open up October errors and September and so on, now it's like, soon as you finish March, which we just finished, most likely errors for the, for the end of the year, that means that cleaning up, and most of things are, um, clerical errors that, they're not, it's not really people's fault that they made the error. In some cases, it is, they didn't understand what they were doing and they did, you know, wrong coding, then we just have to give them the better coding, but a lot of things with enrollment, all in special needs especially, all play off these big set of, uh, rules they have to play by that, we get so many errors for special needs that my old guy said, that's not really someone's fault, it's just the way that it gets processed.
Mm-hmm.
And so, like, literally.
Well, I, I hear everything you're saying and having worked in schools, I know how this has been, we've been woefully underfunded, understaffed in these departments. That's why I think it's important we have this committee. But what I wanted you to explain that was because I don't think the public understands sometimes how much work it is to do some of this stuff. And we need people in charge of it, we need people to check on it, we need people responsible for it, because we, I think, I've sat here for years and we've had woefully underfunded technology, so I support all of those positions and then probably some, because you need, superintendent's gonna want that data done right, on time and the right way. If we don't have the people here, it's always like, just add more to one person, add more to one person, and it's just not acceptable, so I appreciate the explanation and, uh, do you have anything for Mr. Michael Azak?
No, that's great.
All right, go on to the next.
Okay, so now the big umbrella, which has grown exponentially in the last couple of years because of COVID, is the break fix. We call it the wires and the pliers, technology services. Um, so we're doing away in the budget with the director in this department, um, next budget season. And we're looking to add the four positions that you see in yellow, so network manager, VoIP manager, help desk coordinator and client services coordinator. The way that you see it right now, what, what we envisioned, Frank and I have bounced ideas off of each other and it's again a work in progress, but these positions that fall under the CIO will have some type of supervisory role. And what we're gonna try to do with our technicians, what I've been trying to do over the last year is, if technician A shows a liking to VoIP processes, voice-over IP, which is gonna, you know, replace our analog phone systems. It's, um, more streamlined, it's more cost-effective, we don't have to always rely on the phone company if there's a problem, we can do a lot of that in-house, to fix it in-house. Um, we try to train that technician to do that piece, so ideally for me, looking at the bigger picture over the next year, with these additions on the higher end with these positions, is we're gonna be able to train some of those technicians to have a specialty almost. So we're training the people on what they like to do and what they feel passionate about, but then we're building that capacity from within. So that way, if the network manager is out, we still have two technicians underneath that network manager that know the network infrastructure, know how to keep the internet running, know how to keep the wireless access points running, so that way we can test, so that way a teacher can be teaching in the classroom. Uh, priority number one for this department, they'll always tell you, um, the superintendent can have no internet and a school can have no internet. And the school is gonna be fixed before the superintendent because the teachers and the students rely on that internet to be learning in the classrooms. Um, so that's the biggest piece, we can go right into the network manager position. Over the last three years, we've increased the load on the network to over twelve thousand devices. Which means a network manager is responsible for our wireless infrastructure, our hardwired internet, which provides power and data to security cameras, access points, printers, card access systems across the district, always continually has to be monitored. We've, over the last five years, um, and Mr. Michael Azak and Frank had a huge part in that, myself in my former role, we have a new, uh, dock fiber plant across the city that that network manager is responsible for to be, um, in touch with the vendor for outages. Um, we have a ten gig backbone, so we never are gonna have an issue with, um, speeds. So for the people at home, you have Comcast, you have different tiers, when your kid says that his Playstation is slow, that's because you have a lower-tier internet. We are actually providing in our schools right now, pretty much Pentagon speeds of internet, um, we have ten gigs and we have room to grow. And that was, you know, putting our heads together and planning for the future. So this position is basically, I kinda call it the Wizard of Oz position, because they're behind the scene and they're keeping all of the infrastructure pieces running. So that way, teachers, staff, ad building, all of the systems, air conditioning ties into our systems now, everything plugs into a network switch. So that is a position that we had in a former life, that I actually, um, held for quite a while, um, that we wanna bring back. And then again, train some of our junior and senior techs to work under that network manager position, so we're building that capacity from within. So that way, it's not always one person holding all the keys, we have the capacity and we can continue to run if someone is on vacation or if someone actually gets ill. We have that capacity within the network piece. And, and when you see it here, I just kinda put it, you know, these names there because that's how we've been training currently. So those two individuals under that network manager position have kinda been training as more of a, a network concentration. Then we go to the next piece, and, and the thing with these four positions that are in yellow, just so you guys understand, they're gonna work hand-in-hand with each other. Because when we say network, VoIP, help desk, client services, they all interconnect with each other. Um, so every day, the VoIP person is gonna deal with the network person because those VoIP phones plug into the network infrastructure, so they plug into the switches. So they're gonna work hand-in-hand with each other, typical, you know, prime example, Maria's phone didn't work a few weeks ago, it would turn on, it would turn off. We had no idea why, so I was here on site, my office is here, I unplugged the phone, did some troubleshooting. Got the person that's kinda in the role right now of the network person, got on the phone, we worked together with each other and within five minutes, we had the solution. But it required some back and forth and that's why these positions are important, because the communication lines go back and forth. Sometimes they actually get myself involved as a, you know, as a CIO, and then they get technicians involved, so that's why I wanna try to build that capacity from within. So when we talk about the VoIP manager, seventeen buildings, you're gonna be up over four thousand phones when we're complete. Voicemail systems, auto attendance, um, elevator cabs, security lines, that all falls under the VoIP manager position. And it also works hand-in-hand with Ken's side of the operation, because that VoIP manager would then call a low voltage electrician if we have a wiring issue, if we have a line issue, we work hand-in-hand, so that these positions, those top four positions work with multiple departments daily, daily, sometimes more than we can count on a certain day. And then that position then turns to the help desk coordinator and that position, I envision, we have, I have an individual in mind that's been with us for a long time that knows the process, that is gonna do quite a bit of things. So if a teacher has no internet, typically, they're gonna call in. Right now, we have what, one person answering the phone, but with this position, there'll be a second body answering the phones. That person then routes the ticket and/or issue to the appropriate person. So if it's a phone issue, it's gonna go to the VoIP side, if it's a network issue, it's gonna go to the network side. And then that person, one piece that we don't have right now is we don't have a safeguard in place. When a ticket is created, if Frank calls in a ticket, the ticket is worked on and then it just gets closed out. Because we're always reactionary right now because of the lack of staff we have on this side, we never can follow up. This person is gonna be able to follow up with the end user, to make sure that the, you know, the trouble ticket was done correctly, to make sure that it was done professionally. Um, if there are any questions or concerns that they have, this person is gonna route the correct technicians to it, but also do all that follow-up and coordinate with the other departments as well. So if there is a low voltage issue, that person would be contacting Ken's team, Manny, the new director of maintenance, to get that issue resolved quickly, effectively, correctly. Right now, we're triaging as we go, technicians receive the ticket, technicians go out to the building, work on the ticket, close out the ticket. And I just feel like for me, um, I come from that Disney frame of mind, customer is always right. We need to be better at checking on the end user to make sure that it was done correctly, that they were comfortable with the outcome. And if they weren't comfortable with the outcome, what can we do better as a department? So that person and that help desk coordinator, that's gonna be a, a big, that's their main, the duties. However, they'll also be able to go out and work on tickets if they're needed to. Um, we have always had, um, Frank and Brian and I. However, they'll also be able to go out and work on tickets if they're needed to. Um we have always had um Frank and Brian and I all hands on deck. If there's an issue in a school, I mean, I, for example, RPA, the the Westall building, the roof blew off. It was all hands on deck, we had instructional technology people in jeans, we had all of us there as directors at the time getting the problem done, so. That's the other piece, like this department, it merges into so many different lanes, but it's it it's phenomenal the way that everybody works together. I could call and say we have an issue and Frank's gonna roll up his sleeves and help. He may not know the answer, but we're so good at working together, at bouncing ideas off of each other, as well as all of the employees that fall underneath us. That we've been able to be so successful over the years. Um and with these additions. We're gonna be able to create efficiencies and processes and procedures to make us that much more efficient. The last position is client services coordinator. I had this position in a former district. This position is going to be in charge of the Chromebook fleet. Okay, anything that a client uses, laptop, Chromebooks, desktop. Right now, it's so se- separated because people are doing multiple iss- you know, multiple things a day. I want someone to be in charge of incident IQ, so that way we can see when little Johnny broke five Chromebooks. That flags that person to say, principal A, we need to take a look at this. Right now we don't have that because everything comes in so quickly. I don't have that person that can oversee that Chromebook fleet. Right now what happens if an update needs to be done. We have one senior technician that contacts Frank, Frank puts out, pushes out the update and then we have people triaging the update as we go. With that position, that'll be a direct line to the technicians with the Chromebook fleets and the laptops and the desktops, but also a direct line to. Brian, a direct line to Frank, Frank, we're having an issue with update number ninety-two. Frank then gets involved. But then what happens and Frank is awesome about seeing it through to the end, but on the break fix side. With my absence in that department, it's been tough because there's been nobody seeing some of these issues through to the end. I just wanna create more efficiencies. I wanna be able to know that people are in good shape.
I think it makes sense, so my recommendation personally on that would be to call it what you just described. So the position's called client services coordinator. To me, truth in advertising is more like a hardware coordinator. Computer, because it spells out exactly, it's not a uh made up position, it's it's, you just described it a necessary need without a doubt. You ask me about a client services coordinator or you ask me for a Chromebook hardware coordinator, they're not even like, the description is. It would just sell it a lot easier to the committee and everybody to know exactly what we have. Do you have any questions then?
No, I just think that was an extremely thorough presentation and um I think you hit everything. Um right on, um I'm just gonna ask one more time, so the department clerk is obviously not gonna be in there.
It'll be, I'll go back and I'll edit this, I'll actually sit down with Brian and Frank, we'll and and Maria and we'll clean it up. With the suggestions that you made and we can forward it out ahead of time so you guys can look at it and then the full committee can look at it. Um I appreciate those um suggestions because it does, I think in a very technically minded world. Um so for me, that's a good idea so that people can actually see what people do, I I I appreciate the suggestion.
My other suggestion, I mentioned this at another meeting, is across the district, we have instructional technology folks at all different schools. Or whatever, we need them all to be under Mr. Farius in my, in my view. So we shouldn't have a person at Dershowitz we had mentioned. I don't even know the guy, but why does he not fall under the same as, it should be this, so when. I ask or a committee member asks the superintendent, what's happening with instructional technology? She should be able to go to Mr. Farius who tells everybody that's doing that work. We sometimes in the budget is like, oh, I have that position, but that one doesn't. But this one doesn't, so if we can lay everyone out here so that it's, you know, we talked yesterday about the course centers. At another policy change, this to me would be a course center on technology under you. But that means that everybody that's under your course center should be on your, under your tutelage of, you know, directors and and the like. The the only problem I have with some of these positions, and I think we can, I would certainly vote to refer it to get it at the next committee, but. We might need some uh front-ended executive session on some of these positions, so what ends up happening is I, the salaries don't make any sense. To reality, uh as well as management, like we, you you're describing, in my opinion, management in several areas. All those positions need to be management then. They need to be paid like management, they need to be year-round positions, they need to, so. There's systems that we have in silos in this district of, this is how we treat a manager, this is how this person is. But that one happens to be in the union because that does this and that when you get to management, we either. We should just be on the same page, so as I was going through here, without getting into specifics, there was people in here that I see as managers that are gonna manage a lot of people. Well, if that's the case, then you're not in the same union as the, as the people. That you're in that, so that is executive session material, but when I say. To try to maybe do it beforehand, because at the end of the meeting, after we talk about. Voting on positions, it doesn't make sense, we, so we need to kinda get to. The other piece is you just said six times, ten times, maybe more about training your people and getting them to. You know, do what they need to do and everything. Well, I'm personally sick and tired of us training people. And then they go somewhere else, so we train them, they go somewhere else for five grand or whatever else, so. Let's just, in my opinion, let's fight the bullet, do what's gotta be done and pay people what they get. That's just the fact. And then at the end of the day, we're not gonna lose as many people. We end up losing, we're killing ourselves with it because we. Train and then we lose, same thing happens with certain teachers or other departments, but in. In this department, which is why I think it was important to have this technology meeting, so that we have it like, no, we're. We're on it and every month or every two months, whatever we've got, you can come to us through the superintendent and say, we got an issue here, we have to. Uh address it, so um I'm looking for a motion to refer all these positions to this full committee. Motion made, seconded.
Mr. Agnew?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Next up is the org chart to include Fred TV.
So this one is just very straightforward, um Fred TV works hand in hand with every facet of technology. Currently, they sit under the facilities and operations committee uh department and it just made sense. To have Fred TV under the the silo of technology. Just because they dare, they do technology stuff every day. Um whenever there's this meeting, this meeting, for example. You know, Alex has been instrumental in getting these meetings live throughout COVID, um. But we were always bouncing ideas off of each other. I mean, you gentlemen know that I was, you know, side by side with Alex to make sure that these meetings got off. At the same time, calling Frank to make sure Frank was able to make sure that we were good with Google Meet, the whole nine yards, so it just. While we're building the technology department, we were in the department, we're building it, um the superintendent has been amazing with us to to see the need. And to help us build this from the ground up, um it just makes sense for Fred TV to be under the technology side. Their day-to-day operations.
Any questions? I think um my only. I think the, it says org chart, but I think, is that under something?
Mister Kochman, Mister Kochman uh tried to email to me, he's away this week on vacation.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying it's not here.
Yeah, we're gonna, with your approval and vote to refer, we will create. An add to the draft document that you had from our org chart and we'll make it into one document.
So that would be my question would be, I totally support it falling under here. That would mean that the whole department's under you. The way that I, I'm seeing what you're asking for here, whereas currently under Mister Fatchman. Different than, so he he works in collaboration with the superintendent. It it is a very confusing, when you look at. He's under you.
Correct, right now he's under facilities and operations. And and if he, and if we move it over to technology, it would just be the same thing. Mister Kochman would be in charge, just like Brian and Frank would be, just under the umbrella of technology.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any idea why it would fall under facilities, but. But like that doesn't make any sense, so this makes more logical sense. Why I say that though is. This department needs to fall under you, but at the same time, that means you have to be responsible to recommend changes, to recommend. Transparency in budgets, transparency in what the positions are. Uh we've talked about this at multiple meetings, there's things on here like half and half drink. I pay attention and I do my homework, but I can't figure out sometimes what's happening with certain salaries and the like. I personally believe that Fred TV needs more instructors. Like actual instructors, like it's part of, there's pieces of the of the Fred TV that does, you take meetings, you do all that stuff. But we're also teaching kids, so we need to have them, the folks that are there. As you are saying, train up your people to do the tech, the wires and pliers stuff. The same thing should be happening in Fred TV and I've mentioned this to the director. Not saying anything that's not new, but we need people to become instructional teachers. So that whether it's at the high school or at the middle schools or whatever, they're actually teachers, they're teaching the classes. They have other skills, whatever it is, so I'm glad it's fallen under you, but it's a big undertaking to to say. Here's where we want Fred TV to be in the next, I think they do very well. But we also need to get, where are we gonna be in five years in that department? I know under the last superintendent, they tried to organize a vote program, work with the new vote person, like. We can take this to another level, in my opinion, so I like it under you, but just know I wanna be helping you with some, some questions and stuff, but um. So is this a referred to or is this?
I don't have it as a referral box.
I would say that's something we just uh sort of like the superintendent can. You can make that determination, basically that you're moving it, um but I definitely do support it and thank you for the recommendation. Next up is Power School update.
Um I've just briefly twenty thousand foot overview, we are in full, all speed ahead, all hands on deck. With the integration piece into Power School. We are still live for seven one. Um I'm gonna let Mister Michael Isaac speak to this because he's been instrumental in this piece. Um it's been a learning curve for all of us, it's different than what we're used to, but um it he's been, he's done an amazing job so far. Um there have been some hiccups that he can talk about, but like we've told the full committee and Maria and I have, you know, said time and time again, a. A project of this nature, we're gonna have hiccups. There are gonna be things that are missed from that. Larger level down to the granular piece, Brian has found some of those pieces. Um again, he's doing an excellent job and I'll let him take that update over.
So I'll actually start with the hiccups part of things, I mean, we've gone through this since basically we started the conversion right after uh Thanksgiving. And since the holidays are over, we've gone pretty much non-stop almost every day with some sort of Power School meeting or training that we have to do. If not our own homework, but I know what our principals and our school staff want out of their system. Out of any system, I know what things that they're comfortable with and sometimes when you throw that, what we what we didn't ask this way. Power School does it this way. Some of the things that I thought would be doable in Power School aren't necessarily right out of the box doable. But I think I I call them the wish list items, I know my staff are gonna want, and I've actually vetted it against many principals and staff, I'm saying, if Power School doesn't do this, how are you gonna feel? And the feedback is, which encouraged me to say, yeah, these are things I wanna, not, I'm saying fight for, but say. Let's discuss it and use some of our, they call them keys to ownership hours where we can customize the product to meet our needs better. Because I don't want like things that we can't, we do now, that people like doing in Aspen, I'll use Conda as one of the examples, or translating reports. I wanna make sure that functionality exists. It's not the same, but hopefully better in Power School, we can make it better. If it doesn't exist the way we have it now, that's gonna be a sort of discussion to say, all right, how are we gonna correct that, maybe it can't happen immediately, but can happen down the road. That can be an acceptable, you know, alternative, but in 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 general, all the areas of Power School that we've worked on. We're being significant progress over the last few months, like we actually are accepting registrations now. Be a Power School for our kindergarten kids and any kid that's starting next year. Senior Kudo's been um working with her staff. Um you know, almost like I said, taking the keys herself after, and we helping her along the way, getting it up and going. But now she's taking the lead with, you know, if there's any issue with Power School, she's dealing directly with them. Letting me know if there's issues, so I can be aware of the issue, um taking with catalog and help, that's going along fine, um. And like I say, staff attendance is the one thing that Power School doesn't do because it doesn't service staff the way like Aspen does it, so. We're moving all of our, after meetings with um Power School and frontline with human resources, we're gonna be moving our staff attendants to frontline. For next year, so Power School will not be doing the attendance. Um and then that will be the way that, um which actually I think see as an almost improvement. Because frontline strictly does attendance and management and accruals, and I think that's sort of like a um. A better way of doing it, getting your absences in this way, while people reporting their absence that way, it'd be easily manageable. And we can still take the data from frontline and put it into Power School, which would be, you know, in some of like, you wanna know how many kids are out. Our teachers are out every day, because they'll get that information in the Power School. This won't be where you're gonna put the attendance in for every staff member.
And and Brian, just to interrupt, frontline, the way that we purchase it now, it's a cost neutral rule for us because it's already included in our. Our subscription, it's just something that we never use because we didn't use that piece of the software because we were using it.
Well, we're using it, it's just we're reconciling frontline with Aspen daily.
Exactly, we're not using the actual, they're they're entering, but we're not, it's it's just, we're doing an extra step, this this piece will be all in one umbrella now.
And and because we already had frontline, we're not paying any.
We weren't using that feature because we were doing an Aspen already, and we weren't, you know, at that point.
And Power School wasn't charging for this?
Power School doesn't offer staff attendance as a rule.
That was not part of the contract. The only piece, just, and it was for discussion is. Uh Mister Coogan and HR and myself have met with Power School, they like their onboarding piece for HR, so Power School offers an onboarding piece where. If a new employee comes in, you're not gonna have thousands of pieces of paper anymore, they'll be able to do it all online. So we're working with Power School now to get a con, you know, to get a quote to see what that would cost us because Mister Coogan wants to try to streamline HR. Everything would be paperless at that point, it would just be down to signatures when they came in. So we're working with Power School because they offer that piece, they own school spring. So when they post a job, it would be a seamless transition and a transaction for them in in HR, so we're looking at that piece now.
Yep, my advice would be that's a HR function and their budget not the, so. I don't disagree with what you're saying, but that should be something that comes under Mister Coogan's budget in the HR, so that it's not like, well. Now we're getting hidden costs, like so if you tell us the Power School contract went up by ten thousand. It's not really, it's because he's asking, let it be under his cost center.
Correct. So potentially, um last two weeks we had uh several, probably six different uh. Training days for onsite by Power School when they came in and trained. Uh system admin people and people district technology, uh and then we also had the secondary middle school, high school. Uh schools and the principals with their scheduling team to do uh two days of training where they left with homework that. We're gonna be following up on, make sure they're doing their homework, so after April vacation, they'll come back for four more days of onsite training by Power School. Where they're hopefully gonna finish their master, not hopefully, they will finish them, they will finish their master schedule. For the first time ever before this, uh in a long time for the end of school, that's the goal. Because we need the scheduling to be in there to start moving on with the trainings and again, you know, there's a lot more things going on with that, so. If that's out of the way, that allows to other areas and like, we still have to work on getting a lot more data into into Power School. We still haven't gotten in the, many of the uh exit students we had or exit staff that we wanna get in there for historical purposes. We have to work on a secondary uh set of data for both staff and students to get. Custom fields that we've had, that we rely on for different parts of managing students and staff into Power School, but. Power School is limited in how they can bring in data, it's only bringing so many field at a time for so many number of students or staff. So we have to chunk it out and do it in several batches that Power School's preparing the data, we review it, and then we actually import it ourselves. And so um we feel comfortable with that, just that I said, there's not a date going between now and the next ninety-one days till September first, uh July first that. We don't have things in Power Schools uh going on, um we also have a training calendar set in terms of. We have to train everyone. Some people are gonna be trained live by a by a Power School in-person trainer. Others are gonna be us learning stuff that we're gonna be training people to be train to trainers, different things, and we'll have a robust. Catalog of like online things as well as, you know, it could be daily or weekly Zoom, uh uh Google Meet meetings to train people on certain parts. But like the attendance officers are getting their own separate training, the counselors are getting their own training on how to use the system, you know, effectively, as well as. You know, the clerks, both the district and the schools and plus the admin, getting data out of the system like they want to. Um that's gonna happen at different times, like we have the admin institute that check up time there. We have time to be on the at the admin at the end of the school year and the beginning before the school year starts where we know we have them for trainers, we need to. And like I said, we have, probably have like, it's right now, like every Tuesday and Thursday we have, has Power School training days throughout the summer where. I mean, if you're a clerk, you're gonna get trained by someone. If you can make it this Tuesday and you're in case next week, it'll only be the same training over and over for the whole summer, so that way. You'll be able to hit it, because people are gonna leave, people knew people would come on, that wouldn't know about Power School yet, that we'll make sure we have a, everything. Um training options in so many different ways because teacher grade book um is a big thing for the teachers coming back for the school year. The FREA and the um the school department have that, uh grade book mentors that were the Aspen mentors. Now there'll be the Power School mentors that, they're gonna be trained separately, then taking that into the start of the school year where they'll be training their, the teachers. At the secondary level, so we've been thinking about training for a lot, the whole time on how we're gonna do this and we have some great ideas and and great resources to do that with. So, I mean, other than, other than, you know. So, I mean, other than, other than, you know, hitting some hiccups here and there that we have to, you know, debate and, cause you could be the same system for so many years, that sometimes you don't realize what other people have been doing for years, and some people, you know, switch systems three, four times in the, in the last decade, don't mind having the same system for twenty years. So, um, but I feel pretty confident that will be gold if it happens.
Is there any other surprises financially?
At this time, the last meeting when we discussed the IEP live data, that's the only new, um.
So as far as for the committee's education, the original contract has only been increased by that issue.
That number, correct.
So if there's any other issues that are even on the radar, please send them to the full committee, just so we're not surprised that, you know, this happened, you know, I was not happy with it the way it went before, but.
Correct.
We don't want more surprises and we, if we have to push back against them, they should be supporting us, like, you know, they they told us how wonderful it was. And they've done this before with big districts and all this stuff, so hopefully that's gonna continue, but, any question on that?
No, I mean, I think you've covered them in many meetings, um, you know, just pretty much everything that that we're doing, seems like we're doing a lot of training and, uh, integration's going well. You know, it's just really, you know, just just knowing what's actually going on, uh, when we cross over, um, when July one hits, so.
So I think even like, sometimes the updates, uh, even when we add them to like a Friday or something. I think at some point, even before the meeting, we should have a one pager on the Power School update, but not necessarily bury it in a Friday email, where we just say, like at the meeting, here's an update, and everybody has a copy of the one pager that says, things are, like, summarizing kind of what you said here in a nice concise way. So that it's like, okay, we know what, like, we're addressing it, and then we're moving on, rather than go through the whole.
Okay.
So like a one pager quick, and then even if we use it as an agenda item for the full committee, yeah.
We started adding regular ones for the last couple of meetings, we meet, the three of us with Tracy, we meet every week, just to, so that we don't surprise, so that we have a good handle on what's happening and not happening, but, yep.
Yeah, I think it's a good system, it's just that, when we we get over one with the Friday emails and everything, and then if I ever say, check my email and I wanna see what's the Power School update, I can't just type in Power School and it comes up. So if we even, we're gonna have another meeting in a month, but the whole committee should know that that's the case. Anything else on Power School? Last up, three point zero five digital platforms.
I'm gonna hand the floor over to Mr. Farias, and he can discuss this list that you have in front of you.
So, I'll I'll take a stab at this list that has been growing, and I think I speak for everyone in the room, it's, it's grown exponentially year over year. At one point, kind of the tech wing of the org chart had a handle on it, and then schools kind of went off and purchased their, um, platforms. And it started to not be a real central district purchase, so it's, I think we all can agree that this list is, um, it's fairly large. I had my staff break it out to elementary, middle, and high to show you what, um, this is the most up to date list of just paid platforms that we have in the district. Grades that are, what grades are u- utilizing it, what schools are utilizing it, but we've, we've had discussions for a while now too, and we almost did it. I think last year we went through, e- everyone becomes passionate about these platforms, like it's, they they live and die by this is how I need to teach, and I need this in my classroom. But we fleshed it out and had a good, we whittled this number down at some point, and then it kind of mushroomed back up. But I I think at some point, we have to make a hard decision and say, we 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 using one math, one math platform, um. These are the, these are the minutes that we expect, like, some type of standard, like usage standard. And then, so we can get better control, um, and we would know based on how schools are doing, if they're, if they're failing, we would know, is it the platform? Or if they have an issue, they're having trouble with certain math problems, is it, we have so many platforms that you don't know who to pin it, you you don't know what platform is, could it be pinned on. The Dreambox, ST Math, um, so we're in the process of, you know, tightening that up, and we'll we'll have to bring principals together and have them, um, the curriculum leads at each school who are passionate about this stuff, a lot of it is, is curriculum, that my team kind of takes care of the Google apps, the Screencastify, the, um, the last piece of, of it, like amplified IT, grade transfer, like just basic things that help teachers out logistically in the classroom, not really curriculum, but. We definitely need to get this number to a more manageable, uh, this list a little shorter, so. Even with the increase of the staff, hopefully that goes through, um, I envision, like, we're at three now at the elementary, it's sliced up nice, they each have three schools. They go in, kind of share this data with the principals, principals share it out with their curriculum leads, and they use that data to make, um, to guide their instruction. That's what should be happening, but it's, it's too much of a beast right now to to really intimately know all of these platforms, um.
So how we will conquer this beast, cause you're right, we we actually have had this discussion, uh, multiple times. We've inventoried and looked at usage data, and we're gonna bring that to the principals at the principals' meeting, and then we're gonna make some hard decisions, because we do have to streamline and have some standard usage. I think that we have here some where you see, like, for instance, CUS only bring POP, Discovery Ed, that was as a result Sylvia Cus, Viveras, for instance. They had that ELT, even though they weren't ELT, EL, the the state made that money available last summer to them, so they purchased all kinds of software, et cetera, for summer school and to use beyond. They told them it was okay to do that, so they went out and and bought that stuff. But that's not standardized, uh, platforms that we use across the district, so we need to look at each one of these platforms, what are we using, what are we using it for? Some of it, we've, they've out, we've outgrown them as a district, so we have to pull back and say, so now as a district, we're gonna stay with this, this, and this. That's our plan.
Mr. Bailey?
I mean, just looking at this, to be completely honest, it's just a little overwhelming to me, um, just because, I mean, how do you really gauge, um, you know, where students are successful? And then it's just, for me, it's, it's almost like a consistency thing, if we're doing something well in one place and we're not in the other, they're not even on the same page, so how do we, you know, kind of, kind of figure that out? I think honestly, we we, you know, we really have to take a look at this, cause, um, not only that, it could, it could be confusing, um, you know, we have different levels of students, um, students learning and, you know, if students are learning something different, you know, how do you really tell if they're being taught on different platforms, so, um, yeah. Really overwhelming.
We agree.
We totally agree.
Yeah.
We 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 had this conversation today, we were talking about measuring effectiveness, right, how do you know?
And 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 this has been whittled down a little, we we've taken some off the table, and it's like, we just have to pull the bandaid, the, pull the bandaid off it. Life goes on without it, they have core based curriculum apps that they can use and platforms, um, but it it'll make it more manageable. And like my staff, they feel the same way, they're overwhelmed, like, you don't even know where to start, you don't, you don't know what's gaining traction, what's not, um, so.
Yeah, I I think you're, I'm with you, I'm overwhelmed by it, and I've been around for a long time, paying attention to this, but this is not meant for criticism of anybody in this room or anything. But I see this particular pe, this thing here as a management issue from this district. So I don't have the time or the energy to be able to look at this stuff, but I would want to hold the superintendent accountable, which you knew, but decisions have to be made on what we're gonna do and what we're not gonna do, and people have to understand that that's the way it's gonna be. We can't have all of these things going on everywhere. I would like to get a copy of the amount of money that all of these things cost in a bit, separate column. Because we just vote, yeah, it sounds good at one meeting, we don't know, we don't, we don't have the perspective, the committee doesn't have the perspective on all this money, so we'll spend this, we'll spend it. I remember asking a while back, and we get busy, this thing called paper, some sort of like, uh, it was like a tutoring thing or whatever, like.
It is tutoring, online tutoring.
But did we ever use it, how much, like, I know you have the the data, so each one of those should be, it costs us X dollars, this is what it is, like. So that it it becomes sort of like a dashboard for the committee, and what I'd like to to just jump this into, we need more info on this, but at the next meeting, I wanna have another meeting in thirty days. At that meeting, I wanna have a major focus be on the instructional side of what we're doing, so that we can have some of this info, you can have had a meeting with the principals, you can have other stuff, because we need to, from the budget and policy type of thing, what are we gonna do, we can't just have this free for all. So it's been signing up for things that we don't know about, we gotta stop that system, as we talked about, and you've been doing very well with that, I think, it's creating systems. This this system, this system cannot continue, because we don't know, as Mr. Bailey said, is it effective, is it not effective? If his school is doing very well in a certain thing, using certain tools and data and and intensity, why in the heck wouldn't I? We don't have that consistency across our schools, even at at the level, so, um, you had ANET in here, isn't that in all schools?
Yes, that is in all schools.
So I think that has to get added to the.
All, it's all district assessments in the thing, but I.
Oh, it shows up in middle school.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, it showed up on a cover, but I I thought it was.
Right, it's everywhere.
You know.
It's everywhere.
So we will, what we will do, I mean, and certainly you do, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that what would make sense for the next time we meet, we'll have a comprehensive, more comprehensive report on Dreambox, what we use it for, exactly what we're using it for, et cetera, and we'll have a list of the things that we've streamlined to, in addition to, um, because I think that some of these things, like ST Math, is gonna be used as a a intervention for math, right? But that's gonna replace something we used before, what is replacing it, and why we're doing away with it.
Yeah, it's a sort of.
So we'll we'll have that information.
It should, it should make sense, it really sounds very basic, but just do the right thing, have it make sense, and I think we, we definitely can get there.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
The the other piece of, uh, this is when we look at, um, who's gonna do this reporting on a regular basis, that also has to be part of the discussion. That it, in my mind personally, it shouldn't be the people that are working under the district curriculum stuff. I think the principals need to take more responsibility for all of this info and data, attendance, discipline, I've said this in other meetings as well. So they're the CEO of their building, they should be the ones that know exactly what it is, what it's not, and if they say, no, I, you know, I'm not using it, then they should tell you, so we can cancel a membership or whatever it is. But I think the principals need to, um, submit to you certain things as a system, so that every month, the school committee gets a, a, a notice about, like a dashboard of instructional technology, technology, what does it look like? People in the community and in the school committee don't have any idea of the amount of data and work that these gentlemen and ladies are doing, you're doing, like, they have no idea, because it's, it's so much is happening. But we don't give the the, um, platform for you, for them to describe to you and you to describe to us, and for the community to say, this is what we have going on in technology. So I, over the next thirty days, we can talk about it offline to get sort of a, a running dashboard of what we're, what we're doing, so that we have it, so. I'd like to set up that meeting in thirty days, as soon as possible, to, uh, check with Mrs. Flaherty and.
Yep, all points.
Any other questions on the, the platforms? Are there any in the pipeline that I've, no, like that we, is there anything new on the?
That we're gonna purchase, we're in the process of purchasing, no, right now, we don't.
Yeah.
For, for, on this list?
No, for like instructional, like to to add to this, uh.
So I mean, the only, we're we're buying, say, um, we're doing additional subscriptions to ST Math, but we're replacing.
It's already here.
So right now, we have some schools using ST Math, some using Dreambox, and we're going ST Math district wide, so that was something that's, that started in some schools. We see traction, we're partnering with the company and taking it, taking it across the schools.
But nothing new, totally, like out of the, so, you know, I asked that, is I believe that we would need to, I request that, things like that, if they're going to come up, have to come before the subcommittee. So we say, okay, you know, this is why we're gonna go to paper, because, not because some strange reason or whatever, and I don't even know that, whether it's good, bad, or a different, but. We shouldn't just have, okay, we're gonna hire this, and we're, and then we're seeing these bills come through, so if we get in the system of, you told me we have to have a meeting every month, we'll have a meeting every month. I'm not shy about doing the work, but it has to go through a system.
Yeah, we 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 talked about that today, we said anytime we bring something on new, it really should go, just like if we're buying a new math curriculum, we're gonna go through the instructional subcommittee. Um, we didn't have this committee in place, so now that we have it in place, anything that has to do with uh, technology needs to come through the committee, we we know that, yeah, absolutely.
That works for me. Anything else, anybody wants to add, any thoughts? Anybody, Bailey? I would just like to say, commend you guys, you do a great job, as far as I'm concerned, I think in the past you got a bad rap as a department, not from me, but I I think you do a really good job. And you've been understaffed for a long time, so you all have saved this district hundreds of thousands of dollars before you came on. And what would happen is, we were just, the work kept on increasing, and these gentlemen were staying in the same place. So for too long, the work's been overwhelming, and you guys have maintained it, so kudos to you, but now is the time that the committee has to step up, and let's get the right staffing, so. I support these programs, let's talk about how to do it, this committee is gonna be, I think, a very important, powerful committee on giving the information and giving you the ability to tell us what you need, and then showing the community what we do, so we'll have some, uh, what we call dog and pony shows, I think, in the future about what are we actually doing with technology in the classroom? Because people watch these meetings, they wanna see, what is this all doing, so you all do it, I know it, because I talk to you, and listen, I wanna have you be able to show in a subcommittee, so that people see it. This is, you guys are doing some great work, superintendent's doing some great work, so let's applaud that, so, could that, motion to adjourn, second?
New business.
Anybody new business, no? Sounds good, motion to adjourn, seconded.
Mr. Arden? Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Flaherty?
Thank you very much, meeting's adjourned.